Everybody with me in 6:30 on Tuesday, November 26, 2019. I will call this meeting of Webster School Committee to order and ask that we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, the republic which expands, formation, God, invisible, liberty.
Very excited that we have some special guests with us this evening, who I assume we will meet later on. This is a reminder that this meeting is being recorded both video and audio. First item on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve our November 12, 2019 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McCarron.
Just briefly, I wasn't able to make the last meeting. I was out of state on business. And I just wanted to comment that I couldn't be more pleased that the committee and Dr. Gogan came to an agreement on a new contract. He and I worked together closely on the first contract. I was on the committee at that time. We interviewed candidates and we selected Dr. Gogan. And then I had the pleasure of me and Mr. Aviles of negotiating that first contract with her. And just, I will say that at that time, I was convinced, we were all convinced, that we had chosen the right person for our district, the right leader. And I remain convinced after this time that we have chosen. I'm so happy staying here. But I want to congratulate the district, the committee, and Dr. Gogan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McCarron. Any other questions or comments related to the motion to approve our November 12, 2019 minutes? Hearing non-lawary, you just pull the committee, please.
Member McCarron.
I abstain.
Yes.
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 Yes, the motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Good evening, Dr. Gogan.
Good evening, everyone. How is everyone today?
We are good, I believe.
We are good. We are good. I am going to skip my personnel update and move right into student recognitions. I have two very special people here tonight that I've invited to come. The first student is Mia Lipman Tashini. She has been selected as the Superintendent's Scholar for the year 2020. As you know, the Worcester County Superintendent's Association selects a senior, a student that is, represents leadership and ethics and honesty. And Mia has been unanimously selected by staff at Bartlett High School. She will be honored at a luncheon at Holy Cross with myself and Mr. Fran Thomas in January. I want to tell you a little bit about Mia before I invite her up for a photo op. Every year, it's a difficult decision. There are so many wonderful students in our school. Mia stood out this year because she is simply an outstanding young lady. She is a member of the National Honor Society. None of her grades are lower than an A. She's currently number two in the class of 2020. She's the marching band leader, captain of the varsity soccer, captain of the varsity softball. And outside of school, she's the junior staff member of the U. O'Brien Youth Leadership Program. When we go to select the students, the students have to submit a picture for a very nice brochure that we produce. They also have to share their favorite quote. And I really liked your quote, Mia. And is it okay if I share it? It's a quote from Harry Potter. And it's a great quote. And it is. "But you know happiness can be found even in the darkest of times if one only remembers to turn on the light." Very wise. So Mia, as a small token, I'd like to give you this beautiful bouquet and take your Congratulations. Let's get you over here. Come on, come on, come on. Anybody else? Come on. You gotta do this.
Nobody told him he'd have his picture taken.
Hey, cheese. Smile.
Awesome.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congrats. You should be very proud.
Thank you.
Mia, let me just follow up real quick on behalf of the entire school committee. Congratulations. I've had the privilege of listening to you numerous times, especially at those fantastic Berklee jazz concerts. And as Dr. Gogan stated, you're a wonderful young woman and a tremendous representative of Bartlett High School and the entire district. So thank you for all your efforts.
Second tonight, I would like to recognize a Webster Middle School student. Every year, the Webster Middle School student selects one student to represent the middle school for the Project 351. Project 351 is a nonprofit organization that develops community-first leaders. This organization was founded by Governor Patrick Duvall in 2011. And just one eighth grader is selected from 351 schools across Massachusetts. And tonight, I'd like to recognize Vanessa Hivo Varcek. Vanessa has been selected by the teachers at the Webster Middle School for her exemplary ethic of service, values of kindness, compassion, humility, and gratitude. She will be able to participate in 12 months of service and leadership development with other student ambassadors across the state of Massachusetts. So this is what I learned about you, Vanessa, that you put in 110% in everything that you do. I heard that in your speech for National Junior Honor Society, you mentioned stepping out of your comfort zone, to run for a position that in doing so, you would be encouraged to help others do well, always putting others first. We are very, very proud of your accomplishments, and we wish you the very best as you represent the Webster Middle School on your grand adventures as a leader. And I have a small token for you as well. Can we take your picture? Come on, Ma. Come on, Mr. Zajak. Anybody else? No, no, come on. Congratulations.
Awesome. Thank you.
Nice job. Congrats. Congrats again.
Thank you.
You should be very proud.
So again, on behalf of the entire school committee, I just want to thank you for, again, being such a wonderful role model for all your fellow classmates at the middle school. And I'm sure, hopefully, you'll be going to Bartlett next year and you'll be continuing the great success that you've had at the middle school. So thank you very much. By the way, this is broadcasted to about a million people on YouTube, so don't be nervous.
You're now famous. Thank you, ladies. You're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting or go home. It's your choice.
I'm going with him, by the way. Do I have that chance?
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Well done. So I will continue with my report with a personnel update. I'm pleased to inform you that Sean Heatherman has been promoted to the head custodian at Park Avenue Elementary School, that Vernon Tyson, custodian at Park Ave., has been transferred over to the Webster Middle School, Steve Camerano has been transferred over to Park Avenue Elementary School, and we've hired a new custodian at Park Avenue Elementary School, and his name is Scott Williams. We have received the resignations from Emily Long, the art teacher over at Park Avenue Elementary School, and Sabrina McFarland, an ABA at Park Avenue Elementary School. And we have received retirement notices for the end of the year from Ms. Barry Baggett, the music teacher at Webster Middle School, and Ray Peon, the PE teacher over at the Webster Middle School. I am pleased to inform you that we've been having an ongoing search for the assistant principal over at the Webster Middle School. I have good news, but I'm not able to share it until tomorrow. So stay tuned, and you will be hearing some good news tomorrow. With all due respect to the incoming candidate, I wanted that candidate to have the proper time to let the colleagues that she works with be notified first before we make it public here. We certainly know how social media gets the word around, so we want to be respectful for that. All right, so I'm going to move on to let you know that today I had the opportunity to sit down with Alan Himmelberger. He is the executive director of SWECC Collaborative. Tonight, you're going to be looking at their collaborative report, and that is just for your information only. He is the interim. SWECC has posted for a long-term executive director, so that process has begun. With regards to Central Mass Collaborative, I'd like to let you know that the Department of Education has not yet approved the collaborative agreement. It has, in fact, been sent back to the executive director to review. At this point in time, the old agreement is in effect until 2020. Oxford and any other district cannot really become official members until a new agreement is agreed upon. And even if the Department of Education agrees upon a new agreement between now and July 1st of 2020, it still doesn't become in effect until July 1st, 2020. So on a positive note, I'd like to tell you that I'm very, very pleased with the new executive director over at the collaborative. We've been really busy. It seems like it's crunch time, right before the holidays always. We, as you know, are a turnaround district, and we have shared with you the MCAS results from all of our schools. We are eligible to apply for another targeted assistant grant. I want to give a shout out to Ms. Daniels, our grant guru, who has been working diligently to submit that grant. It is a grant for $50,000, $20,000 for the Webster Middle School, and $50,000 for the Bartlett High School. As you know, similar to the Park Avenue grants that we've received, those grants are really designated to ensure that sustainable action plans are being put in place and that we're measuring growth. So those grants will also bring back the air research people to do a MSV, this is a test, and a TSV. Does anybody know what an MSV is?
Something site visit. Monitoring site visit.
And monitoring site visit goes to the Webster Middle School this year for this grant, and the targeted site visit will go to the Bartlett High School. And I'm joking, because when these first came out, I didn't remember what they were. We have a pretty detailed plan, grant that we have submitted. It will focus on a cycle of continuous improvement. It will focus on building teams of teachers to look at the monitoring site visit results and put action plans in place that are aligned to our school improvement plans. One of the new things in this grant is really to take a real close look at the review of our vision, mission, and code of conduct in the schools. School climate teams may be established to really dig a little bit deeper. So I, again, want to give a shout out to Mrs. Daniels for her great work in keeping us on track and working collaboratively with both the middle school and the high school on that. It is a busy time. We had a wonderful community reader day at Park Avenue School today. I'm sure Mrs. Promley is going to fill you in on that, so I won't speak too much about that. But I do want to give you a couple of school updates. I had the pleasure of attending the Bartlett High School play on Friday night with Mrs. Perangeli, front row seats. It was incredible. The kids did an amazing job, and I want to give a shout out to them. And also to the DECA Club, who have, they really had the best snacks. I haven't seen a bag of Cracker Jacks that big in a long time, so it was...
She enjoyed them.
I did. And they still have prizes in them. I want to let you know that tomorrow, the Bartlett High School pep rally is on, and it is on for 9:15. And then we are all looking forward to the Thanksgiving Day Parade, not the Thanksgiving Day Parade, the Thanksgiving Day Football Game in Southbridge and celebrating the 100th year of their matchup. The Bartlett Honors Banquet has been scheduled. It is on December 3. And Park Avenue PTO Literacy Night is coming up, and that's on December 6. And other updates, I'd like to let you know that Mrs. Barris and I attended the first of many tiered focus monitoring training workshops in preparation for our tiered focus monitoring site visit next year. There's a lot of upfront work that has to be done before they come. That includes a self-assessment and putting together extensive documents for review. They will be reviewing special education, civil rights, 504 processes, and procedures. I am sharing some information from our adult education ABE linkage. They received additional funding of over $11,000. $9,000 of that will go towards funding a data entry specialist, and they will be increasing the hours of some key personnel to continue focusing on improving their programs. For anyone that's watching, we currently have 10 openings for the ESOL program. And if you know anyone interested, we urge you to contact the Adult Ed program for those I would like to just give a shout out to the work that the Adult Education Program is doing with our high school and teachers. In particular, Mrs. Hurtin has been really instrumental in working with the Adult Education Program and helping two students take advantage of a free CNA program over at Quincyman College. That partnership and having the Adult Education Program and the high school, these are some of those natural benefits that come from seeing each other every day and working to help students who may fit different programs. So I want to give a shout out to both Mrs. Baker and Mrs. Hurtin for that. I'd also like to mention, and I have mentioned before, we've been working with Mahfay on the Real Madrid Sports Program through Mahfay Foundation. We have been given approximately about $15,000 to start that program. Our athletic director, Tony Peranto, has met with the folks that are leading this. We will be starting this program in April. It's a program, it's a non-competitive program. It's not, it's designed to teach kids more about the sports, but more about themselves and goals. So Tony, I'm sure, will come when the program's in effect to give us an update on it. We're looking at targeting a small group, possibly our second language learners for this, and mirroring a program similar to this. The Real Madrid has done this in Lawrence, Massachusetts. So that's good news. I would like to let you know that the first CPAC meeting occurred here on November 20, and a presentation was given to parents on parents' rights by Mrs. Mary Baker. It was well-attended. Our ELL Parent Advisory Group here met here on November 21, and we had six parents attend, and it was a really interesting meeting. We had multiple languages. We had some parents that spoke Spanish, some parents that spoke Portuguese, and one translator. And we laughed. We laughed hard about how easy it is to miscommunicate when you don't speak the same language. And so we have gotten some pretty valid information from our parents, and we're working on trying to improve how we send information home. That requires us to really look at, you know, not just Google Docs and putting some money possibly in our budget coming up to make sure that we have the proper funds to translate. We did do an initial quote to get the Bartlett High School handbook translated, and it came back for $30,000. That's a little bit out of our price range, so we're trying to figure out how to get the information to families without that kind of cost. So that was a very good meeting, and we are meeting again. We have a meeting on January 9 scheduled for another ELL Parent Advisory Group. So if you kind of take a look around this room, you'll see a bunch of holiday presents. These presents in this room are from Mahfay. They dropped over 100 presents here with lots of food the other day. There were about 251 employees that did a drive just for our school, and they did holiday presents, and they're all labeled for different ages and genders, and we're going to distribute those to our guidance counselors, who are going to distribute those to families who may need them. On top of that, we have been blessed, and I'll say that in capital letters, B-L-E-S-S-E-D here, with Jill St. Seere and all of the volunteers that are helping her organization, It Starts at Home Initiative. We literally will probably fill this entire room with gifts, and that is not an exaggeration. My office is filled with bags upon bags to give to families in needs, and it's not just one gift, it's many, many for one particular student. So I want to give a shout out to Jill St. Seere for her first year in doing this. It's been quite successful, and it's really heartwarming. We also have, it's sort of contagious when one person starts to give, lots of people start to give. So the man behind the curtain also has donated. Mr. John O'Neill has, him and his family, collect Christmas trees at the end of the season and fully decorate them with skirts and ornaments, and we have a number of them to give out to any family who would like to have a Christmas tree. So we're very grateful for that. And finally, in my report, I just would like to let you know a little bit about the Webster Tree Lighting. That's on December 7 at 6:00 PM at the Town Hall, and the Winter Wonderland is December 14 from 5 to 8 at Town Hall. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Gogan. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? As usual, as you've mentioned, there is a lot going on, an incredible amount of generosity, both from our corporate partners as well as citizens in the town. So we would like to thank everybody that makes our children's lives a little bit easier, because unfortunately, some of our students sometimes don't have it as easy as we all do. Thank you very much. Continuing on with the agenda, student update, Logan Peranto. I've been told Logan is unavailable this evening. I just wanted to quickly thank and recognize all of our, in honor of Logan, all of our fall athletes, both at the middle school and at Bartlett. The season is almost over, and just want to, on behalf of the committee, wish the football team, and I believe the cheerleaders go to this game, correct away?
Usually, yes.
Yeah. And our cheerleaders, all the best on Thursday. It appears it will not be as cold this year as it was last year, which is a good thing. The wind might be a little stronger, but I think the high last year was about 9 degrees.
Below, maybe. Below.
I'm trying to be, without the wind chill, that's the actual temperature. So we wish all the best to the football team and the cheerleaders, and again, thank all the kids for their efforts this fall. Continuing on with the agenda, next item on the agenda is business manager report. Good evening, Mrs. Perangeli.
Good evening. Thank you. Today started out great over at Park Ave. with the community reading day. I know Robin's going to talk a little bit more about that, but when you don't, when you see all those little faces, you don't think things can get any better. And then I was reading the news online that the Student Opportunity Act was signed into law today, so, by Charlie Baker. So what does that mean for Webster? You know, initially, when this came out, we were looking at approximately, now, these are numbers, you know, are going to change as we move through, but over the next seven years, it looked like an additional 2.9 million in Chapter 70 funds potential for Webster. The bill actually signs in 1.5 billion over the next seven years towards education. The formula increases the amount of money provided for low-income students and ELL students. It increases the funding for employee benefits. It looks at the GIC, and it takes an average of three years, which is huge for districts. As you know, the increasing cost of health benefits that we have to pay has a major impact on the town budget. There's also some major changes in circuit breaker. One that is going to be a key help is it includes transportation costs for out-of-district. As you know, the town spent about $1 million last year in special education transportation. Not all of it is out-of-district, because we do transport kids in district, but that will have a major impact for us as far as reimbursements. And they're going to fade that in over a few years, about 25% by 2021, 50% by '22, and then 75% in '23, and 100% in '24. So over the next few years, it's going to be really interesting to see how our Chapter 70 funding changes and grows. I'm really looking forward to that. But along with funding, it's not just the Funding Act, there is also targets that come along with this that we have to meet along the way. It requires the Commissioner of Department of Ed to establish statewide targets for addressing disparities and achievement gaps among student subgroups, including subject manner and grade level. It's going to require superintendents in consultation with the committees, school committees, to establish local targets and submit them to Department of Ed. We're going to need to complete, initially looking at it, we're going to need to complete a three-year plan to meet these targets. The expectation right now is that the first one will be due in April of 2020. These plans will need to cover, you know, four topics. How the Chapter 70 funds will be allocated among our schools in the district. We're going to need evidence-based programs, supports, and interventions that the district will implement to achieve those gaps. We'll have to use metrics used to measure success in addressing these gaps. And then we're going to have to have a description of how we'll measure increased parental engagement, especially for parents of low-income students, ELL learners, and students with disabilities. We're already doing a lot of those things. We're already doing those things, but we just don't have anything actually down in a plan, which I think they're going to require, you know, which they will require. So it's not like we're not doing these things. It's not like these practices are going to be new. It's just a matter of organizing and putting it down on paper and submitting it in. So this has taken a lot of work over the past couple of years. There's been a lot of efforts by our larger school districts, our cities. As you know, we were here a year ago with the support from the school committee sending in letters, and it's nice to see that they took it seriously, and it has come to fruition. And there's a nice buzz around the business manager network right now. Everybody's saying, "You got numbers yet?" So it's a little soon, but I'm sure there'll be more to come. And another perk of this act is they're also adding more money to the school building. So it went from 600 million up to 800 million in funding for MSBA, for school renovation and building. So there are a lot of good changes happening at the state level, and...
The number's annual.
Excuse me?
It's an annual number.
Yes. Yes. Yep. So it's exciting, and I think, you know, I look forward to see how those really wash out for us. You know, we just got to make sure it comes to the school side, not to the town side, and we'll be all good.
Intense.
Yes, exactly. We'll work on that.
It's for the kids.
That's right. That's right.
It is.
That's right. That's right. As much as we want to say we're one big pocket, you know...
The whole purpose of the Student Opportunity Act is to close the gaps. So they're really focusing on the subgroups of the gaps that, you know, we need to focus on. So I don't think we're going to have an issue with that.
I don't think so either. Are there any questions in regards to that?
Yeah. Mr. McCarron.
So I would just, a couple things. One is, how complicated is it? So, good news appears, someone recognized why there were... All those things that we lived through. How did the... How that all helps. But by the same token, it helps the taxpayer.
Absolutely.
Because, you know, as a town, Webster has stepped up time... Yeah? Often times more than it care. And always struggled to...
People have tried to do the right thing, but our financing has always fallen short, and we're always trying to catch up, it seems. There's almost never enough to do the programs that they mandate. You know, we have to figure out how to pay for the things that they require us to do. You know, we have to figure out how to pay for the things that they require us to do. So again, it's good for the taxpayers as well. So if the state's going to come through with this extra money, it does lessen the burden on the taxpayers in the town, and at the same time, help the kids. So that's kind of what I see. I hope it, it all pans out. You know, we'll be, we'll be watching and...
It's very exciting.
It's very exciting.
Yep.
Huge, yeah, thank you. So Mr. McCarr, Little Birdie has asked me next time if you could just speak closer to your mic. Oh, sorry. Unless you want to repeat yourself.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So I'm very excited for this additional funding, and I'm looking forward to, because you've done such a great job with the budget over these past few years, so I'm excited to hear about your thoughts in terms of where to put these extra resources. Because, you know, like we've said, you've done a great job these past years in putting the resources where they're needed. I think that's why our schools are improving. So it's such a great opportunity to continue to put the resources where they're, they're needed, build up all of our programs, and meet the needs of all of the kids. It's really great.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments from the members? I just want to thank, you know, Senator Fatman and Representative McKenna, obviously, who have been in front of us a couple of times, I think, over the years. This all came from the Foundation Budget Review Commission, which is, you all know, you know, came out years ago identifying these massive gaps, going back all the way to the Ed Reform Act of 1993, I believe. So certainly, I want to thank them and, and the legislature and Governor Baker for finally coming through with what has been a significant gap in funding, and to Mr. McCarr's point, trying to make it a little more level playing field. And ultimately, obviously, it'll benefit the children, which is what we're all attempting to do on these sometimes long and exciting winter nights as we get together formally.
It is all about the kids.
So thank you.
Today was a wonderful reminder of that.
Awesome. Which leads me into our FY '20 budget topic.
Yay!
Yeah, it's my favorite time of year, it's all good. So we have had budget meetings. We are meeting pretty regularly now, going over the budget. We spent last meeting really looking at positions and programming across the district, and really talking about schedules and what we can do to improve our, our programs, taking a look at restructuring, if restructuring needs to happen with a schedule, and what does that mean for our program, and where, where will we see that progress, and how it's going to affect our staffing. So we did that at the last meeting. At the next meeting coming up, we're going to be focusing on supplies and other items in the budget, and taking a hard look at that. And we are certainly moving, progressing and moving along, and we will certainly have a budget for you, for that first meeting in January to review. It's, it's a work in progress, and we are trucking away at it. So it's all good. Next item I have on the agenda is the grant closeouts for fiscal FY '19. In your packet, you should have received a spreadsheet, because you know I like my spreadsheets, of all the grants that we closed out for FY '19 and completed the final reports on with the state. You will notice there are a couple of FY '18 grants, and that's because, if you remember, those grants are now two-year grants, they call them multi-year grants. So those are usually your federal entitlement grants, your Title I and your special education grants, that will run two years. I'm not gonna read through the whole list, but what I'd like to see is that returns column. They should all be zero. We should never be returning money. There's always something that we can do, and always something that we need. So we don't want to return money to the state that we're getting. So I'm happy to say that all of these were completed, they all look good. Final reports have been completed, and as we go through our end-of-year audit, all of that information will be looked at. And next item on the agenda is the School Building Committee update. We did have a meeting just last night. We reviewed timeline for our project here at the high school, looking for feasibility study. We will be going to special town meeting in January. We are looking at how to, what's best to get the information out to the community, and just talking about next meetings and, and what it's going to look like as far as timeline goes. We plan to meet again in December, and that's right around the corner, in a couple of weeks, in December 16th, I believe it is, off the top of my head.
With the selectmen.
With the selectmen, and the finance committee, to review some of the project and what we're looking for. But I am happy to say that we are progressing forward, and we will be getting more information out to the community in the upcoming months.
Just one addition to that, that we scheduled today. Monique and I will be going into Boston to the MSBA office December 19th to go over, they do an enrollment projection, they'll do a full enrollment projection, and they'll be sharing that enrollment projection with us before we go to that meeting. And to start to talk a little bit about our educational plans for the high school and how that ties into our enrollment. So it's an initial meeting with them.
Yep, thank you.
Yep.
And that concludes my reports, unless you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mrs. Perangeli? Hearing none, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the principal report. Robin Parmley, Park Avenue Elementary School. Good evening, Mrs. Parmley.
Good evening, how are you?
Very good, thank you.
So we have had a busy, busy time at Park Avenue. We've just recently had our parent-teacher conferences, and we had, oh my goodness, it was so packed. There was not a parking spot anywhere down the road into the next neighborhood. We had all of 600-plus folks coming in. It was just packed. It was wonderful to see the support of all the families coming out to be there, to learn about their child's progress. And I want to just give a shout out to my teachers. They worked so hard to be well-prepared, to be able to give very precise information to parents and families. We just wrapped up our first trimester, so we have report cards coming out very quickly here. And I do want to say, kind of matching what you were saying, we did have our translators on board for that night, and our report cards are also being translated into the different languages that we need to try to help make that connection. We recently had Looney Math coaching our grade three and four staff. They were there for the entire day, and we're really grateful that we can have them come. It really gives our staff an opportunity to learn about new math strategies, to be able to ask those questions about the areas that their students are struggling, and really kind of get an action plan in place with a coach right there, talking them through that, and they felt like it was very beneficial. And we had our Student of the Month breakfast, right? It was exciting. So Student of the Month, I got to tell you, we have our Kids of Character Celebration every Friday, but the Student of the Month is like the whole shebang. They've, they've shown that they're kids of character, respect, responsibility, that they walk in empathy, that they walk in integrity, but they also work hard. It doesn't mean that they might be straight A students, what it means is that they don't give up. And they give everything they have, and they're very invested in their learning. But also, who they sit beside at lunch and on the playground, and how they treat each other. So important. So when they become Student of the Month, it is high accolades to those students and to those families for the work they've done, and for the staff, for the work that they've done in supporting our students. And I, I put my instructional leadership team on here because the work that we're doing at Park Avenue, we've already met, I believe, let me think, six or seven times. And being a turnaround district, there's a lot of work involved, and these individuals have been so invested and so dedicated and committed to the work at hand. And then they have to go, we usually develop tuning protocols, and then they have to bring that back to their team. And it's hard to sometimes be the voice of the work that, and the task that has to be done. And yet, they go, and they really are committed, and they really try to be there to encourage their team, but also to come alongside them to make the changes that we need to improve instruction. So if you don't mind, I just want to give a shout out to my ILT kindergarten, Mrs. Lauren Galati, who just so happens to be here tonight, finishing up her last few admin hours, so she is almost ready to be an administrator, she's going to be a...
I thought she was going to be here voluntarily, because these meetings are so exciting.
Exactly, that too. She will make a great administrator. Grade one, Kim Terrio. Grade two, Kim Forget. Grade three, Sue Ricard. Grade four, Kathy Garner. And our UA representative, Emily Long. So I just want to thank them for the hard work they've been doing as we look forward to what is around the corner for each new month and the work ahead. And last but not least, woo-hoo, Community Reader Day. We had 40-plus readers, and let me tell you, those kids were so excited, they couldn't wait, and the readers came in enthusiastic. They each got a book, and they kind of took it how they wanted to take it, if they wanted to do a project. They also took questions about their occupation, and it was amazing, as I walked around the building, to see the students so engaged and hearing back from the readers how much they got out of it. So we are thrilled to have had that come back into place. And again, this was a huge team effort, and this was under the direction of our reading specialist, Deb Pushes, and the academic interventionist, Sue Ricard, Faith Veronis, and Joyce Sidebottom. They really coordinated the entire event, and did an amazing job. So great things happening at Park Avenue.
Thank you. Sorry, thank you very much. Are there any questions? Tried to sneak that in, but you...
It's okay.
...word ended sooner than I thought. Are there any questions or comments for Mrs. Parmley?
I just have one comment.
Yes.
I, I want to thank you for all the hard work that your whole entire school is, our school is doing to support our students, not just with a, instilling pride and a sense of value and purpose, but you're really promoting the excitement of learning. Today's event was, hands down, incredible. You know, all of us at Central Office had the wonderful opportunity to get to go into a classroom and read a book to students, and then a lot of us did projects with the kids. And that's what it's all about, that joy of learning. And we thank you all for doing what you do. So nice work. And I just wanted to mention, if you can see all the papers around this room, today we had our new teacher orientation meeting, our monthly meeting, and today it was facilitated by our principals. Robin Parmley, Michael Zajac, and Fran Thomas came in and led the new teacher training today, and they trained and talked a lot about the evaluation process in Standards One and Standards Two, and broke it down into, you know, a, a good dialogue of conversation. So when, when I say there's a lot going on, there's a lot going on. Good job.
Thank you, thank you on behalf of the whole team.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I just also want to reiterate my thanks. I was actually lucky enough to be at both the Student of the Month breakfast and the Community Reader Day this month. So both of them were just amazing events. The kids are so excited to have just new people coming into the school, whether it's their parents or somebody reading them a story, and so proud of the work that they're doing in their classroom and watching the connections, you know? As a parent, I get that gratification from my own children, but as a member of the committee, just to walk into the school and see the little faces and spend some time, even a short amount of time, an hour, really meant a lot. So thanks for having us.
Oh, absolutely. And a big thank you to all of our readers in the community. We had local businesses, we had pastors of churches, we had the police department, the fire department, we had MAFRE. I mean, it was just amazing, and they just filled the school, and we just got some wonderful feedback from them about how impressed they were about the behavior and the respect that our students walked in. And that just really was exciting to hear, because we truly are asking them to be kids of character, and they're stepping up to the plate. It's great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is old business. First item under old business is wellness policy, ADF, third and final reading. This was a new policy that was drafted by the administration, as well as the nursing staff, I believe, Dr. Gogan?
And our food service director, Ellen Nyland, and the nurses worked on this, and there was a lot of work in this, and I believe it's very comprehensive and something that we have not had, so I would highly recommend approval.
Any questions or comments from the members? So per school committee policy, any new policy does require to go through three readings at our meetings. This is the third and final reading. So I will entertain a motion to approve the wellness policy, ADF, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Again, thank you to everybody who was involved in putting this together. Laura, you just pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, the motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, under new business, is the acceptance of a, of donation of display case from MAFRE. Dr. Gogan?
Thank you. MAFRE has already donated two beautiful display cases that our custodians have put on wheels over at the high school, and they are going to be used for art display. As you may or may not know, our National Honor Society students are working to renovate the trading post up at the high school, and we have some MAFRE volunteers, and when they were doing that, they kind of wanted to steal one of the art cases from, one of the cases from the art rooms, and we got another case. So they're donating another case for us.
Borrowing, right? They wanted to borrow...
No, they're giving us a third, they're giving us a third one, so there was no in-house fighting. So this will be the third display case, and they're beautiful glass, beautiful new display cases.
Any questions or comments from the members? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to accept the donation of the display case from MAFRE.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Laura, you just pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, the motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is acceptance of donation of $1,500 from Cure Leaf. Dr. Gogan?
Thank you. I have the complete privilege and honor about speaking about the wonderful things that our students do here with community members and teachers and staff. And I take every opportunity to try to find ways for us to bring in funds when we're in need of funds. Our show choir music boosters are well-supported by our district, but also need to raise money for costumes. So I had mentioned that to our Cure Leaf donors, and they came by and dropped off a check for $1,500 that will be given directly to the music boosters and to the show choir through the Webster Public Schools. So we're very grateful for that donation.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the members? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to accept the donation of $1,500 from Cure Leaf.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Got the next one.
Hearing none, Laura, you just pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, next item on the agenda is acceptance of donation of $500 from ExxonMobil. Dr. Gogan?
We have received a letter stating that we are the 2019 Educational Alliance application for the school noted, has been approved. I am not sure who applied for this at the middle school, but we are in receipt of winning this application, so I will find out who submitted it and thank them dearly. It looks like we are being, are being given $500 from ExxonMobil for the Educational Alliance program.
Any questions or comments from the members? Let me just first say, for all three of the corporate partners this evening that we just approved, as well as what happened throughout the year, again, thank everybody for their tremendous generosity. And Mr. Zajac, you have a phenomenal staff, because they go ahead and get money for you that apparently, based on your reaction, weren't even aware of, so...
I'm not sure if this was by the office, I might, I would talk to Stacy, I know they've received this in the past.
She, yes, Mrs. Tucker's had me pose for pictures, and she says we need to do this to win money, so I just do what she tells me.
I'm not even going to follow up with that.
With signs and, and different things, so I just do what she asks me to do. It's money, fuck.
And life's better that way, correct? Well, again, thank you very much to you and your staff. So without any other questions, I will entertain a motion to accept the donation of $500 from ExxonMobil.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Laura, you just pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, the motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is approval of cafeteria worker job description. Dr. Gogan?
I'm going to pass this over to...
Oh, sorry.
...Mrs. Perangeli. It is a new job description.
Yes, just updating what's there.
So as-is, as presented?
Yep, yep, as we go through these and jobs come up, we're just updating the job descriptions.
Any questions or comments from the members? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to, to approve the cafeteria worker job description as presented.
So moved.
Second.
It's quite the team to my left here this evening. Hearing a motion and a second.
Yep.
Is there any further discussion?
They've got their mind on Thanksgiving.
Yes.
Getting home and getting-
Telling me to stop talking and-
That's right.
Hearing no further discussion, Laura, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, and before we continue with the agenda, speaking of baking pies, I just want to take a moment to wish all of our staff and students and families, and obviously the community at large, hopefully a very safe and blessed Thanksgiving after we hopefully win the hundredth anniversary of the football game. And-
Mr. Chairman, you know that winning this game determines success of the football season, no matter what the record is.
Absolutely, correct.
We all know that.
Yes.
And I think I quote Reenie Landraven in that also.
I'm sure you quote a lot of people, and he's certainly one of them that would have said it. So again, just on behalf of the entire committee in the school district, I wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and a very deserved four and a half days off. Correct?
I don't think so.
It's not a half-day tomorrow?
Yeah, it is. Yeah.
For most.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Maybe for some.
Okay.
Continuing on with the agenda, the next item on the agenda is Review Transfer Signing of Bills, Payroll, and Vouchers. I will entertain a motion for a transfer request from Bartlett High School in the amount of six thousand three hundred fifty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents to be transferred from the Bartlett High School Student Activity Savings Account to the Bartlett High School Student Activity Checking Account.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Laura, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Abstain. Next item on the agenda, we have been asked to transfer two thousand nine hundred and nine dollars and sixty-two cents from the Park Ave Elementary Student Activity Savings Account to the Park Elementary Student Activity Checking Account. In case people who are watching are wondering, I'm not tilting my head for a reason. The documents who I'm trying to read are going sideways. I will entertain a motion as such.
So moved.
Second.
It changed.
Missed my cue.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Laura, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Continuing on with this evening's agenda, I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law of federal grant in aid requirements, specifically review of executive session minutes per Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-Two, Subsection G, Subsection Two.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, and we will be adjourning executive session, returning to open session. Hearing no further discussion, Laura, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, it's a unanimous vote. Again, we will be entering executive session, returning After adjourning our executive session, we have continued with our open session. Continuing on with this evening's agenda, the next item on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve the July sixteenth, two thousand nineteen executive session minutes as presented without releasing them at this time.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Laura, would you pull the committee, please?
Abstain.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laura, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you very much, everybody, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving.